Good morning and welcome to the Parks, Arts, and Transparency and Education Subcommittee meeting. Today is March 25, 2015, and we have a full house in here. Councilman Waring is live on the phone, and we have Councilman Valenzuela and Councilman Nowakowski cannot join us today. So, thank you. We have called to the public. Okay. So, can I have the approval of the minutes of February 25?
Move approval.
Second. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion moves. For those watching at home, the items related to the agenda on the screen, you can contact my office at (602) 262-7447 if you'd like more information or any of the reports that are listed. Items three through five are for information only. I will pull item three, that's Parks and Recreation Board. We have a card regarding item three. So, Jerry Van Gass, can you please? Here's your card. Got it.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Jerry Van Gass, 4610 East Via Estrella. I notice it's appropriate, the title is also Parks and Transparency. I have here a copy. I thought there'd be a few more council people here today, but of a records request from early February, resubmitted late February, and again this month, requesting verification on the number of park rangers as of passage of Proposition A for extension of 3PI money for 30 years. We have yet to receive anything except a notice from the Public Information Officer, Greg Bach, that it was being researched. It seems pretty obvious to me that you should have an accounting of the number of people working at a specific time. Two months after the request, and we still don't have verification as to how many rangers were employed. I've got a copy here and a copy of Proposition A, requesting where is the number of rangers? That should be pretty easy to obtain. We've got another request in with Human Resources. So, I'll place my bets on them before Parks.
So, I will follow up that. Follow-up is Mr. Burke, can you please speak on this?
Morning, members of the committee. Yes, we have that public records request, and we are working on it. It's a matter of pulling the records out of HR, and it's just not been readily available. So, we're progressing on that.
Okay. So, can you give me a timeline?
Not as I sit here right now, but I'll get you one.
So, then I'll make a timeline. Can we have the records request done by, within the next week?
Absolutely. Do our very best.
Thank you. Any other items? I have no other items. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for the staff before we move forward? Nope? Okay. Public comments at the end. No problem. No problem. I enjoy things like this. Items six through nine are on the consent agenda also. Are there any questions about items on today's consent agenda? Oh, sorry. With no questions, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve items six through nine on the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Councilman Waring? I don't think he's on. Councilman Waring? We're now out of quorum. Okay. I'll hold those items. I am moving item 12, the Phoenix Public Library named IMLS National Medal finalist. If you guys can please show, Rita, come sit down and let us hear about this. This is very exciting. And I just want to put a FYI, Juan was one of my students at South Mountain Community College, and I'm so proud to see him in front of me. So, good to see you, Juan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman Pastore, members of the committee. I am so happy to be here this morning to share some really great news about your favorite library system. The Phoenix Public Library has been named a finalist in the 2015 National Medal for Museum and Library Services. Yay! Thank you so much. This award is the nation's highest honor given to museums and libraries by the federal agency, the Institute of Museum and Library Services. This is the first time the Phoenix Library has been nominated, and we thank Mayor Stanton for nominating us. We have been selected as one of 30 finalists out of more than 150 nominations. There will be five library and five museum winners announced in May. Winning the Institute of Museum and Library Service National Medal means that the Phoenix Public Library is recognized as providing exemplary programs and services to our community. It means that we hold true to the tradition of what a library means to its community while being forward-thinking and visionary in how we interact with our customers and partners. During the recession, the library's budget and hours were reduced, and many programs were also reduced. Three years ago, we began building back our special programs by working collaboratively with numerous community partners, and our programs and services have blossomed. Last year, more than 4.7 million customers visited the Phoenix Libraries and checked out 10.4 million items, including nearly 1 million e-material downloads. The programs that were highlighted in our nomination include Early Learning. We have first-five-years interactive spaces in every library, more than 70 Storytime and Early Literacy programs that strengthen reading skills that are offered every week with strong community outreach to Head Start, daycare, community centers, shelters, schools, and low-income apartment complexes. We utilize hundreds of teen volunteers during the summer to help implement our summer reading programs for all ages. We provide Kids Cafe, which serves daily nutritious meals and educational activities to children in partnership with St. Mary's Food Bank at seven of our locations. College Depot, a service which provides one-on-one guidance and assistance to students and families seeking education and college options. We opened Hive at Central, an entrepreneurial discovery space and support for those seeking to launch a business. We expanded lifelong learner opportunities through our adult services programming and our partnership with the U.S. Holocaust Museum's State of Deception exhibit. We developed a maker space called Mach One, which is an informal learning space for makers, artists, crafters, and hackers of all ages whose programs promote STEM learning. And we expanded our workforce literacy programs, providing extensive job, career, education, and guidance to anyone who seeks it. I am very grateful for the nomination because it recognizes the tremendous impact that the Phoenix Public Library has on our community. I would like to share with you now how a few of the many stories from our community can move you.
the Mach One space we have is very huge, very open, and I do computer programming, which is one of the things I like doing.
We come to libraries for the different programs that they offer. Like, they have the Mac room on Tuesdays, which is really good, Legos and a lot of different things for the kids.
It's just so easy, I think, for the kids because we can access a lot of materials online. We can come here, we can go to the Paul Verdi branch over in West Phoenix. It's just really amazing how much material is available to us now compared to in 1980.
And, you know, it allows the boys be able to stay here almost the whole day, and we love the different activity, like what they're doing right now. At the same time, they can go read a book and play games downstairs and/or play on the computer.
So, I started working for the International Rescue Committee, so I help immigrants and refugees start small business. So, the Hive at the Burton Bar Library has really been essential to that. I refer my clients there on a weekly basis for their marketing workshops and several other workshops, and they really love having that extra space.
The Hive's important to me because I just can't make it on my own getting my business started. I have to have some support and mentorship and work with some other people.
We began a seed library. It allows customers who have a Phoenix Public Library card to check out up to three packets every three weeks. They'll automatically fall off their library cards, they're eligible to take out three more after three weeks. And it's to increase sustainability, local farming. We use it with our kids in our programming. We have some bean sprouts going right now.
My favorite part of the library that is very innovative is the creation of College Depot. Allows us to confidently send our students here for financial aid, career planning, school choice, whether it's vocational or traditional community college or universities. And so, it's a very innovative, very innovative approach to how libraries are redefining themselves in our community.
I learned College Depot from my high school, South Mountain, and I didn't really think it would be helpful, but now that I'm here, I just wish I could have gotten here sooner.
In my role at St. Mary's Food Bank Alliance, we developed a great partnership with the city of Phoenix and the Phoenix Public Libraries to introduce our child nutrition program called Kids Cafe, which is an after-school and summer meal program. They go home and may not have a dinner meal to eat, and oftentimes go back to school the next morning not having eaten anything since lunch the previous day. And that's why the partnership with the Phoenix Library and St. Mary's Food Bank is so important because we're able to feed a child's stomach, but also their brain.
I enjoy coming to the library, especially here at the Burton Bar Library, because it's one of the greatest places to network with people.
Yeah, as a parent, I love the library, the space, the program, the variety of activity can be done in one location.
I applied for my SAT, you know, studied for my SATs at the library. I actually applied for my first job at the library. So, all of those things have really helped to shape who I am today.
I love the library because it's a wealth of information for my children, for myself, for my husband, for our whole family.
I like the Phoenix Public Library because it's a great resource for my kids.
And it's been fantastic because I always tell kids when I go on outreach visits, is I tell them that, you know, within one month of working at the library, I knew what I wanted to do. I wanted to become a librarian so that I could help people and assist them in whatever they wanted to do.
I like the library because it's fun.
Home. The library is just like home. Even better.
I'm so proud of the library. There are several customers here with us today, some that will offer public comment, but I would like to introduce you to Juan Juarez. We first started working with Juan in College Depot when he was a student at South Mountain High School, as the councilwoman said. So, Juan, please tell us your story.
Thank you. It's a true honor to be here today to basically be an example of the result that the services of the library, and especially College Depot, can do. I am a first-generation college student. I recently just graduated from Grand Canyon University in December, and without the help of this program, I think it would have been a lot more difficult. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be here and to share that, you know, this long journey from high school all the way to, you know, going through community college through ACE, and then going into university, it's been defining in the way that I am here because of so many people that have helped me, including College Depot and this amazing program. So, I hope not to see any cuts or not to see any, you know, programs being taken away through city, you know, budget difficulties. So, I just want to say that I'm very proud of the award that they're finalists for, and I hope that the city council gives them their full support on this journey. And hopefully in May, we can see, you know, them as the recipient, as the library. So, thank you.
Thank you, Juan. We're all very proud of you.
Want some of my water?
Today is an important day because the Institute of Museum and Library Services will showcase the Phoenix Public Library on their Facebook page all day long. This is a way that you can show your support by visiting the IMLS Facebook page and post your personal story about how the Phoenix Public Library has positively impacted your life. We're also showcasing many of our library services out in the City Hall atrium today. I invite you to stop by and visit with staff, sign up for a library card if you don't have one, because it is your free ticket to great services. The Phoenix Public Library is proud to serve this community. Our thanks go to the mayor and city council for your tremendous support, to city management and all of our library friends for helping the Phoenix Public Library thrive. And I also want to thank the staff who do a fantastic job, day in and day out, of serving our community. Thank you.
So, thank you, Rita, for your report. And Juan, I am so proud of you, you don't even know.
Thank you.
But today, as Rita has stated, today is the MLS. We'll be broadcasting Phoenix Public Library programs and services on their media platforms, and the Phoenix Public Library community publicly championing the library will be part of the equation in the IMLS decision as who will be the final winner. So, today is very important. So, anybody watching, everybody in the room, please go out to the atrium, visit some of the resources of the library, but please get on your Facebook page or sign up for Facebook today and go to the MLS and tell your story regarding the Phoenix Library. That's one of the biggest parts, part of the equation, but that's one of the biggest pieces that will help us win. So, please do that for us. And thank you once again, and thank you to the mayor for submitting us. So, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Are there any questions from the Subcommittee? Any comments?
I do have some comments. Rita, thank you very much for doing all that you're doing with our libraries, all of our libraries. People don't realize what they're walking into anymore. If you're in Phoenix, you're walking into a library, you are walking into a resource. It's not just books anymore. It is, you know, you have computers, you have classes. I really appreciate the video that you put together. The Hive at Central, for an example, is collaborative, working closely with Arizona State University, looking for those partnerships that help these entrepreneurs from these organic, this organic leadership that's happening and growing right around our local libraries. And you've found a way to get that done at no cost. But again, the video highlighting things like Kids Cafe, for an example, easily the library can say, well, it's not in our purview to worry about things like that, but it is. It's all of our responsibility. Our children are all of our responsibility in finding those partnerships. So, I want to thank all of our partners, ASU, St. Mary's Food Bank, and so many others. And Juan, I got to tell you, you being here and sharing your story is, it's what it's all about. You know, for those who are watching this and for anyone who's in this room, for those who wonder if, you know, if our libraries are worth the investment, especially as we have, you know, tough budget times, they listen to you, and this is something that's going to be archived, so pass this out. Send the link over to your friends and family because this is what it's all about, and it's certainly worth the investment. So, thank you for that. Speaking of, because Juan, you did mention something at the end as well, you're hoping that the city doesn't make any cuts to our library system. And we are going into that budget, this budget process. So, log on to phoenix.gov. You can find a budget hearing that is near you, anywhere in the city. There's something happening pretty close to where everyone lives. Every council district has multiple. We will have these budget hearings out there and give everyone an opportunity to come out and really talk about the good things that are happening in our libraries and advocate for our libraries and whatever else you may want to advocate for. But that's an important point, and thank you for bringing that up.
Councilman Waring? Any comments? No? Yay! Congratulations. Yay!
Yes, congratulations. Yes, I was going to say, good things, I love libraries and everything, but we're not talking about, just so people at home aren't confused, we're not talking about cutting libraries here today. We're not even, we're not even taking a vote today, right?
No. We're celebrating today.
We're just discussing and celebrating.
We're celebrating today because we were a finalist.
People who might have just turned on might be a little confused.
Okay.
Not about your comments, but I mean, just in general.
Yeah, no, the point, the point came about is
Right. He mentioned that.
I'm hoping that the city of Phoenix does not make any cuts. It just happens to be a timely, very timely that we have these budget hearings that are taking place throughout the month of April, and we should be advocating for our libraries and whatever your, whatever the priorities are.
So, we're celebrating item 12. We're not cutting anything. The Phoenix Public Library named IMLS National Medal finalist. Today, we are celebrating and pushing everybody to get onto the Facebook and tell your stories in order for us to become winners in May. So, that's what we're doing. Any other comments? No? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have speaker cards or comment cards, and I would, Beth Luell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the council, my name is Beth Luellen. I live at 78 West Cambridge in District Four, and now I'm a new business owner in an office in District Four as well. For about 10 years, I've had the chance of working at the state Capitol, including time staffing, then Senator Waring.
Survived that.
I survived that. I enjoyed it.
Wow. You have medals for it. I'll give you a medal.
That's a nice thing about your student.
Through my opportunities at the Capitol, I identified the need for, I think, a new role at the Capitol, which is really helping others advocate more effectively and with more information to their state leaders. And so, the Hive business program really helped me make this business happen much, much faster and more effectively than I had even hoped. So, I wanted to thank you and the Hive program for really helping guide me through the process of establishing my company. I started it in October, and I'm happy to report that I have survived the first legislative session almost completely and more effectively and successfully than I had even hoped. So, it really was the Hive program that helped me walk through step-by-step the practical application of how to form an LLC, how to create accounting, and how to make my dream come true. So, I just wanted to say thank you and take this opportunity to thank you for your support and for helping make my dream come true.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And glad you've made it through and that the Hive helped you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Katie? Oh, look at Katie. Yay, Katie.
Hello, I'm Katie Euler, and I live at 7332 North 31st Avenue, and I love, I absolutely love the library because I have been going to a lot of their programs, and I really enjoy them. Like, I've been to Hacker Haven, and I've made lots and lots of robots, and I've made lots of things from Legos and, yeah. And then I also did the sewing class where I made this little kitty, and it was my first time ever using a sewing machine, and I love the library for that. And there's also just bunches of programs that are super-duper fun, and they're just super, super awesome. And I really, really love the library for all of that.
Well, thank you, Katie. I appreciate it. I appreciate that you're here testifying and letting us know how good things that the library is doing. So, thank you for being here. I like your owl. I think I need a, I think I need, or I'm going to have my little one go learn to sew. I learned to sew in eighth grade, and it's a great hobby to have, but in a great skill to have. But I really want to know, are you going to become an engineer or technology?
I think so.
All right. Cool. Next is Amy Euler. I believe the mother? Yes. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Amy Euler. I live at 7332 North 31st Avenue, and I've been coming to the library for a couple of years now. I first started taking my daughter Katie. Two years ago, we heard about Hacker Haven through the Arizona SciTech Festival, and when we went there, we had just had our experiences of the library being, you know, you go to Storytime, you check out books, and that's kind of what your experience is. When I walked in there, though, I was suddenly surrounded by 3D printers and several different types of robotics kits and Legos and Connex. And it was astounding to me that we have a resource that can cost hundreds and hundreds of dollars for private clubs for kids to do these robotics clubs, where at the library, you have this for free. You have thousands of dollars of really high-tech robotics equipment that kids can just come in and play with every week for free, which is incredible. Last, actually, last night, my daughter was in Hacker Haven, and we had a robot about the size of a miniature golf cart that they were zipping around the library. We've done engineering and design challenges there where kids have designed their own Mentos and Diet Coke-powered rocket cars. And then we had Mentos and Diet Coke races just outside of the library doors, which was pretty cool because I didn't know you could do Mentos and Diet Coke at the library. We've also have Science Cafe there for adults where we have scientists and professors coming in and talking about different things that they're working on in the scientific community. And it's more of a relaxed coffee shop atmosphere where people can just interact and find out what's going on. And I really like that there's this area filled with tons of materials and resources that kids can come in and use, and it's really integral to their STEM development. And I just think that that's awesome. So, I really love the library, and I really hope that these programs can continue because we just absolutely have found a home there, and we love it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So, those are all the cards for item 12. I am moving back to item six through, sure.
Thank you. So, staff tells me I can respond to this. Is that correct? Yes. So, we had a speaker and called the public asking about, I think it was Jerry Van Gass, ask about the number of park rangers. I don't see Jerry. Jerry's not here. I guess he left. Tim Sirakowski. So, I'm confused, as he is at the delay, in getting an answer to them since I asked my staff to go upstairs and get the budget book from last year. We have 61 and a half park rangers budgeted. Now, we may have some vacancies, but I guess my point is, it doesn't seem like it should take very long to figure out how many park rangers we have budgeted, which is 61 and a half, minus, and you can find this on pages 229 and 230 of last year's budget detail. It just seems like if we have a few vacancies, we should be able to count that up in five minutes or less and get them an answer. So, I guess I'm asking staff to get them the answer.
Is Jim here?
It shouldn't take weeks and weeks. It shouldn't take a public records request. That should have been a five-second phone call, and it's a little frustrating.
So, I understand.
So, I guess I'm going to relay that to him because he left, but I wanted to respond to this because it certainly didn't take very long to do this.
Yes. So, I made the requests for the, to get an answer within the next week.
I think I did it.
You did.
Oh, I did, yes.
But now that you've identified where it's at, maybe we'll get it by tomorrow, so, or late this afternoon. So.
Maybe in the next hour.
Jim's not here right now. Yeah, within the next hour. So, Jim's not here right now. I believe staff can relay the message. Back to items six through nine. These are on the consent agenda. Are there any questions about the items, or can someone make a motion?
Motion to approve items six through nine on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. All those indicated, say aye.
Aye.
All the ayes passed. Now, we're to item 10, Unified City Services Card and Municipal ID Cards.
Pardon? I mean, you know what I'm saying? I just don't understand how that could take.
The purpose of this report is to provide information on a Unified City Services Municipal ID concept and to seek direction from the Parks, Arts, Transportation, no, Transparency and Education Subcommittee and recommendations for the city council approval on moving forward to create a citywide policy. to create a citywide policy for development and use of such a card. Tony, take it away.
Good morning, Chairwoman Pastore and Subcommittee members. We're here today to discuss concepts and receive policy direction on the creation of a Unified City Services Card or, and/or a Municipal ID Card Concept. And with me today are Debbie Cotton, Dan Brown, and Chief Sandra Renteria, all who have been part of this effort to date. By way of background, the city has begun preliminary research on a Unified City Services Card concept. And pictured on the screen are several different cards that the city currently has that residents use. There's the bus card, the Metro on the left. Down on the bottom is the library card that residents use. Up on the top right is a picture of the Parks Card that residents use if they go to exercise or participate in another activity at a Parks facility. And then, also, the City Services Bill is pictured there, otherwise known as, people call it the Water Bill. That is used when residents go to a landfill or when they attend household hazardous waste events. They need to show their City Services Bill in order to participate in those events. At the same time that we began our research related to the Unified City Services Card concept, we also talked with Chairwoman Pastore, who referred us to a group called the One Phoenix Coalition. They also are researching municipal ID Card Concepts and perhaps they may partner with a local or one or two credit unions to work on their card. So, as I mentioned, we're in the discovery stage and I wanted to just review some research that we have conducted related to other cities who have implemented city services-type cards. New Haven, Connecticut, is the first example that we'll review today. They implemented their card in 2007. It was the first municipal ID Card in the nation. The startup costs were $300,000 and they have an annual operating cost of about $52,000. It functions as an ID Card as well as a library card and a debit card. It also allows residents to access the recycling center. And the people who have the cards also get residential rates at the public beach or the city's golf course. The cost for the card is $11 for adults, $5 for children, and it's issued by the city's Office of Vital Statistics. And as of early 2014, the city had issued 12,000 cards. So, that's New Haven. We'll move to San Francisco. In 2009, the city council adopted a policy there in San Francisco. Startup costs were about $800,000, annual operating costs about $200,000. Functions as proof of identity and city residence. That's required for accessing and getting, requiring, accessing one of the cards. It functions as a library card. Also, there's medical services that you can access if you have the card in San Francisco. Gives you discounts at local attractions and it's a valid ID for opening a checking account at participating banks. The cost in San Francisco is $15 for adults, $5 for children, seniors, and low-income individuals. And the city administers the program through the Office of the County Clerk. About 19,000 cards had been issued as of November of 2013. When we moved to Oakland, California, they implemented their card in 2013. The startup costs were about $20,000 and it was, they received a grant to help cover the startup costs. They partnered with SF Global, which is an outside agency. So, that's how the city of Oakland pursued their card. And it also functions as a debit card. Costs are $15 for adults, $10 for youth and seniors. And the city administrator's office oversees the contract with the private firm called SF Global. The reason that Oakland decided to contract with a private vendor, when we did our research, they stated to us it was because of concerns about sensitive information possibly being made available through public records requests through the city. About 4,300 cards have been issued as of March of 2014 and police in Oakland reported that 12 cards have been referenced in crime reports and eight in-field interview reports. LA approved a policy related to the creation of a card in 2013. It was going to function as an ID Card as well as transit and library systems were going to be involved and there was going to be a debit feature on the card. They issued an RFP in March of 2013, but our research is showing us that there has been no update to that RFP since it was issued in March of 2013. The most recent example, it was the launch, and you probably saw some of this in the national news, was the launch of ID NYC. So, that was New York City's effort that launched in January of 2015. The mayor decided to launch this card in January of this year and dedicated $8.4 million for startup costs. And there looks like there's going to be an annual operating cost of about $5.6 million. It functions for city services, admission to city buildings, and if residents sign up for the card in the first year, it will be free and their Office of Human Resources Administration manages the program. They have some information about how their information is stored and that is through their Technology and Telecommunications Group. And they use guidelines regarding the handling of confidential information. They were very specific in our research. We got the most helpful information from New York City. Their card is very specific that it does not authorize cardholders to drive, nor does it serve as proof of identity to obtain a driver's license. It does not authorize cardholders to purchase alcohol or tobacco products, receive public assistance benefits, or travel on an airplane. And it does not confer immigration status or provide work authorization. So, as I mentioned, we're just in the preliminary research stages. Thank you, Councilwoman and Chairwoman Pastore for bringing this to us to research. And that concludes the formal part of my presentation and we're looking for, now we're open for discussion and questions and also looking for some direction from the Subcommittee on moving forward.
Thank you. I have a number of cards. So, should I go to the?
Let's do the cards.
Let's do the cards, okay. And you have two minutes. Brendan Mahoney?
This is on, good. I'm Brendan Mahoney. My address is 2617 North 8th Street and I'm here in my capacity as chairperson of the city's Human Relations Commission. This concept was brought to us back in the fall and it was by far the largest meeting in attendance we've ever had. We had business leaders as well as community leaders and the commission immediately saw that there were many possible uses for this card and enthusiastically endorsed examining further. And additionally, the commission voted to become part of the coalition to work on this project. We perceive that there are many benefits from bank access to convenient access to city services and transit, emergency medical information, and business partners that may want to participate grant discounts and so on. It's especially of interest that first responders can use this to identify people who may not otherwise have identification on them and it could be extremely valuable. It's important to note that the card is not an attempt to supersede federal or state law. It will have a disclaimer on it that says it's not valid for driving. It confers no immigration benefits. It really functions something like a student ID Card. It is a form of identification, but it does nothing more than that. It's also something that is good for civic spirit. It's the Phoenix Card. We can use it in a lot of places. Businesses are eager to participate in it and use it as a form of discount. So, we endorsed moving forward to examine the concept. We worked with city staff to overcome some of the initial logistical hurdles that we perceived were there and we asked the Subcommittee today to take further steps to formulate a concrete proposal that can be presented to the council for further consideration at a later date. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Jeffrey Smith. Dr. Jeff. And then, after that, will be Michael Hoffman.
Good morning, Chairperson Pastore and distinguished members of the committee. My name is Dr. Jeff Smith. I live at 570 West Tam O Shanter in Phoenix. I'm here in my capacity as superintendent of the Balt School District in Phoenix, Arizona. Balt School District has a very, a population that is very diverse. We have over 70% of our students are Hispanic. We have African refugees. We have the state's largest homeless shelter in our area. As a result of this, many of our families have needs when it comes to identification. When Balt Schools have, like many of the schools in the state, are very security-minded. All of our campuses are closed and they're very, we have very strict requirements for people that come on campus. They have to be able to drop off an ID and leave an ID. Many of our population do not have an identification that is suitable for this and they may even be afraid to bring an identification. So, as a result of this, this One ID Concept would be very beneficial to our schools. It would help parents to be more involved in their schools, to be able to volunteer and participate in their children's education. This is very important. They'll also be able to, as you'll hear, access city services and so on. The Balt Promise Neighborhood is a concept where the school system works together with the community to meet the needs of their community. And so, this falls right into the realm of what we do to help with workforce development, to help our community be successful members of our community. And so, the Balt School District and Balt's Governing Board supports this concept and we would accept this ID as one of the identifications for families that want to work with their, within the schools. So, we encourage you to support this concept.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Michael Hoffman? Hoffman.
Hello, I'm Michael Hoffman. I live at 837 West Ivanhoe in Chandler, but I'm here in my capacity as a minister for the Community of Christ at 4224 North 44th Street in Phoenix. I believe there are three important things that will help with this card. First of all, it provides an efficiency for city population, which is really a benefit to members of our church, but also members of the larger community as well. It will also increase access to people who didn't have it otherwise and provide for a level of public safety in and around our areas. And finally, it will streamline city services. But for Community of Christ, there's really an compelling reason and that, I believe that that is that it creates an equality among the residents of Phoenix with this card and it helps us create peace and justice in our city. So, I would support that and ask you to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Helfcott. And then, after that, will be Sandra Weir.
Thank you, Chairwoman Pastore, members of the Subcommittee. My name is Jeremy Helfcott. My address is on file and I'm here today as a member of the Phoenix Human Relations Commission. For the past several months, as Chairman Mahoney mentioned, we have been working on moving forward on this initiative. And I want to make specific note that not only have we heard from large numbers of people in support of moving the municipal ID Card forward, we've heard from a really diverse set of communities. We've heard from individuals who are marginalized in many ways, many of whom are afraid to interact with public officials and particularly with public safety officers because they have no comfortable way of proving self, of being able to say, "This is who I am and this is where I live." It's also a huge benefit to populations that don't drive and might not need or want a state identification card. We've heard from people with disabilities. We've also heard quite a bit from individuals who are interested in that medical and emergency contact information component. At the moment, there's no official ID in Arizona that allows for listing that critical information. This would be an opportunity to give our residents that option to opt in, have that information available so that if they do have to interact in, for example, a medical emergency, their information is readily available to first responders. I want to close with this. Chairman Mahoney too mentioned kind of the esprit de corps, the sense of pride in the city of Phoenix. And I can tell everyone here personally that I'll be first in line to receive one of these cards and it will go in my wallet in front of my Arizona driver's license, especially days like yesterday when, while the Arizona Legislature was passing SB 1445, the city of Phoenix was passing the Equal Pay Ordinance. I'd rather have pride in my city than in the state in that moment and this will give us that pride. Thank you very much. I urge your continued support of this initiative.
Thank you. And then, after Sandra, will be Richard Paul Zuckerman.
My name is Sandy Weir and I live at 1025 North 2nd Avenue. The coalition appearing before you today is a community of friends. I joined the One Phoenix ID Coalition as a resident of District 7 and I am active in my faith community and other community organizations. We support the One Phoenix ID Card and we intend to obtain it and use it. I envision a day when I will go from the library to Light Rail to a store on Roosevelt Row. I will use my One Phoenix ID to borrow books, to ride the train, and then to receive a discount at a store. I will appreciate the convenience of presenting the same card at each stop. My companions that day will include some who have not previously had access to a photo ID. On another day, I might enter a facility at a time when officials have reason to check people's identity. As I enter the facility, it will be great when more of those in front of me in line can move through the door quickly because their ID will be a trusted entry card. Our ID Cards will remind us that we are all part of the same city. We are all residents of One Phoenix. Let's travel through Phoenix with the One Phoenix ID. Thank you.
After Richard Paul Zuckerman, then it will be Anna Gaines and then after that, will be Vance Ensel.
Hi, good morning. I'm Richard Paul Zuckerman, 14020 North Black Canyon Highway, apartment 2007, Phoenix, 85053. And I wanted to express my, respectfully, I oppose this measure on the grounds of costs, for one. I vaguely recall about six months ago, you had a hearing on a budget issue of how you're gonna deal with the costs of, I don't know, some kind of pensions or something, retirement pensions or whatever. I believe that we're having enough problems balancing the budget in the city and that this is costly. And another thing is it encourages violation of the federal immigration laws. I don't believe the federal immigration law should be nullified. I believe that I am against giving uninvited immigrants one iota of benefit. This is part of a plan with international treaties of which Mexicans lost their agriculture land and are now coming over to the borders and living on cheap labor. And I believe that it's a movement as a result of globalists. One is called the Bilderberg Group. And they're due to meet, they meet in secret and they're meeting in a couple of months again in Austria and their plans are to control our economy and they want to reduce the world population. And they're using, overpopulating with immigration with all these countries. They're doing it purposely. It's part of a plan to destabilize the governments and undermine popular culture. The closing statements at the last Bilderberg, the meeting, the Bilderberg Group meeting, the chairman said, "Let's continue overpopulating countries with immigration and let's continue developing robots so that we don't need the labor of these." They refer to us as useless idiots. These are arrogant billionaires who meet in secret, the Bilderberg Group. Thank you.
Can I, Anna Gaines, please?
Yeah. I'm short in length, but not up here. Good morning, Anna Gaines. I live at 20408 North 28 Place in Phoenix. I have lived here for 50-some years. I do have an accent, as you can hear, so I came here from another country, Mexico. I came here legally and I very much resent the fact that you are using identities to give people who don't belong here benefits. I believe that this is all an effort to populate the state with people that are not supposed to be here legally. I have enough IDs. I have state driver's license. If you don't have a driver's license, you can still get an ID from the state. And there's no need for anybody to miss an ID unless they're here illegally. And my question to you is, why are you doing this? You're... If you don't have a driver's license, you can still get an ID from the state. And there's no need for anybody to miss an ID unless they're here illegally. And my question to you is, why are you doing this? You're socializing this state of Arizona. We have enough liberties that we have lost. Are we going to be wearing our numbers on the wrist of our hands or on our arms like the Nazis did? Is that what you want? I oppose it terribly. I oppose it completely, and I do not want to lose any more freedom. You have enough information about me. I don't want that information disseminated to people who are here illegally and use it. They have tried in the past, and I don't want that to happen to anybody else in this country who are here legally, and they are honorable people. We need to honor our laws of immigration. We need to honor our laws of keeping our, conserving our liberties, our freedom, and enough is enough. Thank you.
My name is Vince Ansel. I live in District 2, Jim Waring's district. I like to address the municipal ID debacle, and what I like to say is that if this is going to be modeled after the San Franciscan, the New Haven, and the New York City models, we are in big trouble over here in Phoenix, Arizona. And the reason why I say this, this is an article from the New York Times. It states, "On Monday, New York is expected to introduce the country's largest municipal identification program, issuing cards intended as a boon for undocumented immigrants. The card will confer discounts for prescription drugs, access to city buildings, and free memberships to zoos and museums. It will be accepted as a library card across the city's three public library systems, and recognized as identification to open and account at several banks and credit unions." Now, if this is the intent of this city council and this movement to push through such an agenda, this is unconscionable and doesn't make sense. Now, if these cards were to be issued to the legal populations of this city, that would be maybe a different story. But if the intention is to hand these cards out to those who are in this country illegally, that is, first of all, against our Constitution, against the rule of law, and I am surprised that we have law enforcement officials that apparently are pro this municipal ID card, given these facts. And that's all I have to say about that. We are, myself and the group I represent, Writers USA, is totally against issuing these municipal ID cards based on the fact that they will be handed out to the illegal immigrant population in the city of Phoenix. Thank you very much.
I want to say it's Alice.
Novoa.
Okay, Novoa.
Good morning, Pastor and audience. I'm Alice Novoa, and I was born and raised in Douglas, Arizona. I am from Mexi, of Mexican ancestry, of two legal parents. And as children that are from legal parents, we don't want criminal felon, illegal aliens in the United States of America. I want you to write this down, especially you, Ms. Teran over there, you're an illegal from Awaprieta. Now watch this. U.S. Code 181015, everybody write it down, U.S. Code 181015, Section E, and I'm paraphrasing. Anybody pretending to be a United States citizen and is working in the United States or getting welfare food stamps and access is five years federal prison with a $7,000 fine. Section F, anybody pretending to be a United States citizen and is registered to vote and is voting in a local county, state, or federal level and is voting on an initiative, on a referendum, or a recall, is five years federal prison with a $7,000 fine. Univision, which is a TV station, in 1980, 2008, when Obama was running, they said they had over 60 million criminal illegals here, and hermanos vayan a votar, brothers go and vote. They're not going to ask you for your ID. There are four of you that I am aware of that are in this council, are council people who are dancing with the group Aztlan. Aztlan is a radical Islamic Mexican Catholic movement. You can laugh all you want. It's a radical Islamic Mexican Catholic movement, and for those of you Christian pastors that are dancing with Aztlan, you will be exposed as well. I have all material evidence of what I am just saying. The Aztlan movement is serious, is taking us over. Steve Gallardo, Rose Pastor, your father, he was a metro boy, he's an Aztlanero. You, I got to check you out, Mr. Valenzuela, but I know that Kate Gallego is part of Dancing with Aztlan, and so is her husband. So we got to stop, and we're going to expose you, and while you guys think you're going to get away with this card, you're not. Go home because you're all felons here.
I want to say Rev. Erin Damayo. Okay, who's Rev.?
Good morning. My name is Reverend Erin Damayo. I'm the Executive Director of Arizona Faith Network, and glad to be here with you today. When I was first presented with this initiative, I really began to think about the idea of identification, of having an ID and what it means to be part of a community, but also to have the access to the services and the benefits that come with it. As a pastor, as a Presbyterian pastor, not only does our theology speak strongly of a sense of belonging and the benefits of community, but we strive to build communities within our parishes, within our faith communities of diverse individuals. Having that sense of identification with a community makes us who we are and makes us stronger. If someone within our circles has difficulties, it's up to us to find a solution so that all may be included and benefit as full partners. And Phoenix ID does just this. Upon hearing some of the stories of our brothers and sisters in Phoenix who have felt excluded or hindered from being part of the community, I personally felt a sense, a strong sense of calling to support this initiative. The Board of Arizona Faith Network, made up of denominational partners and leaders, has recently reached out to become a fully supportive partner of One Phoenix ID Initiative because we truly believe in what it's aiming to accomplish. The reason that we have done so is threefold. First of all, as people of faith, we are called to seek ways which provide for the common good of all God's people. One way to do so in the structure of the society in which we live is to support the expansion of city services to all Phoenicians so that not only do we have a sense of city unity, but more importantly, all have access to services that all need to take care of ourselves and our families. And second, with the One Phoenix ID, it not only helps us to make these services more available, but it also makes the process of attaining these services more efficient, something that is extremely important, that promotes a culture of inclusivity. And third, and perhaps the most important to my heart, is that the municipal ID provides a layer of protection for marginalized community members, many who have felt restricted access to services that we all should benefit from. And this goes back to the importance of making things right and finding a solution when members of our communities feel excluded. It is up to us as a community to step back and include them in the circle. The most vulnerable in our midst, many of whom are members of our faith communities, will benefit greatly from the One Phoenix ID. The homeless, survivors of domestic violence, and people who may feel voiceless and without value must be lifted up. Making sure that all have an ID and identification encourages all to have a voice, to be healthy and hopeful members of our society. And for this reason, both I and my organization, Arizona Faith Network, encourage both you and the community to support this initiative. Thank you, and God bless.
Next is Kurt Shepherd, and then after that is Arthur Olivas Jr.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Kurt Shepherd, and I'm here in my capacity as President and CEO of Vital Soul. Vital Soul supports this initiative for three reasons that have already been laid out by folks. One, this card gives unified access to arts and culture to folks in the community, and we heard about STEAM earlier. Folks add aid to communities to have STEAM, to move, or communities forward. Second, this ID card provides valid ID to folks, kids, teenagers over age of 14, which helps in public safety when you have to have ID in certain situations to show who you are. And third, it helps with public, esprit de corps, as we heard. These folks who are going to have access to these services and opportunities in Phoenix are going to have more strong affinity to their communities in the city of Phoenix. That's the organization standpoint, and that's all I was going to talk about before. But sitting here, I'm going to support this as an individual, because prior to coming to work at Vital Soul, I spent 20 years in the Air Force. And when I was overseas doing my job, we did defend everybody. That's everybody, and I leave it at that.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Arthur Olivas Jr., and I represent the Legal Latinos Immigration Patriots. Actually, the name is, you can read it here. Anyway, we are totally against this. We wonder, another thing is, we wonder why this is not put out in the media, Channel 3, Channel 5, Channel 12, and all this. I know that you have a media deal in the city, but nobody pays attention to that, not even you guys, unless you're on it. So we need to have the public notify this stuff that is going on here within the city. We need to know so that we can show our presence and either let it say yea or nay on this. Secondly, these people, who are these people that paying for these, well, they're poor people, they can't afford a lot of stuff, but who pays for these signs, these T-shirts, and those flags that they wave when we have the deals, you know, and all these hamburgers that they're eating, water? Somebody's paying, so these people aren't that poor, they're not that off. When they go to any medical facility, nobody refuses them. They're already in. Nobody, it's against the law for anybody to refuse medical services. This thing here is nothing. I mean, and it's nice for you people to have compassion for them. How about having compassion for the people that are paying your salaries? How about having compassion for the people that are taxpayers? When are we going to get compassion? Why should we be burdened by paying for all their stuff? You know that we're paying for it. When are you going to quit? When are you going to support for us? We're the ones that vote for you. Your paycheck comes from our taxes, not theirs. And another thing, can I go into any library and go ahead and fume any propaganda that I want? Is that permissible? I would like a yes or no. Because that's what I saw here.
We're at public comment.
It's evident that you guys don't want to hear what I have to say. I'm sorry if I hurt your feelings. My last comment is this. If we would enforce our immigration laws, we wouldn't have these problems. Enforce our immigration laws, that's what you should be out there supporting. Enforce our immigration laws.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan Jeffries, Carlos Velasquez, then Anna Montes de Oca, and then Tomas Robles. Robles.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Megan Jeffries, and I'm with an organization called Act One. I'm representing a slightly different perspective because we don't have constituents and we don't serve individuals specifically, but the Act One Culture Pass is a resource which would be available to individuals who would use this municipal ID card. It is accessible through the public libraries, and with the Culture Pass program, individuals may check out passes to visit the Phoenix Zoo, the Phoenix Art Museum. We have 23 arts and culture partners. So we support the concept because we believe that this will give even more people access to the arts and culture resources that are available in our community.
Thank you. Carlos?
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Carlos Velasco. I live in 720 West Palomari Drive, District 4. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to thank the people who support this initiative, as well as the people who are against this initiative. I'm a proud American, and I believe in our democracy. I'm here to support this initiative and make an argument about economic development. We believe that, I'm a board member of Local First Arizona, and also the director of Fuerza Local, an organization who advocates to support locally owned businesses, on the argument that when you support local, more dollars will stay and recirculate in their community and generate more tax dollars to then filter into public services and other things. So a couple of things, a couple of main reasons why we're big supporters is because we understand that this ID will provide us the opportunity to streamline some services, which in turn will benefit, will benefit us in the opportunity to create more tax revenue, who then, that then we can use for, again, public services. The other thing, as a representative of the business community, I can tell you that a lot of the communities that I work in have, the businesses actually work as hubs where a lot of the community come in who don't have identification and actually speak to our entrepreneurs and say, "Hey, I have an issue of violence, whatever it may be, how can you may be able to help?" I know in the communities that I work with, the police department is working very hard to build trust with these communities, and I believe that this ID will help facilitate that trust. And then the third thing is, we're really excited about the prospect of getting behind the bi-local. The ID, as we know, connection plays, really is a strong supporter to get people to vote, be feel more proud and feel connected. So we're really excited to get behind this initiative in a way to get more people to get the ID, feel proud, and support more of the local businesses, and then also then, again, generating more tax dollars for our community and building stronger places. Thank you again so much for the opportunity, and again, we're strong supporters.
Good morning. My name is Alma. Oh. My name is Alma Montes Yoc, and I'm here as a capacity as an immigration attorney in the community. I've had several years of experience in working with undocumented crime victims, and specifically victims of domestic violence. And in my experience, when I was approached in terms of this concept, as an attorney, I'm required to advocate for clients and to make sure that not only my particular clients, but the community is a safer space. And so what I often find when clients come to me and they've had to leave their homes in the middle of the night with their children and their possessions, you don't really have time to plot out what you're going to take, such as identifications. And so when they come to me, then the issues of how do we enroll my kids, how do I identify and transition into a safer space? And so the concept of an ID card that would allow someone to have access to their basic vital information, to be able to transition from an unsafe space to a safer space, I think is essential for a community as a whole, regardless of what you think of in terms of someone's status. I definitely am here to support the program. I definitely also caution and concern, especially because of the climate of anti-immigrant that we have here in the state of Arizona, I would want to ensure that clients and people feel safe in providing information over, because as we know, we've had legal battles that have gone all the way up to the highest levels in terms of ensuring that people aren't profiled and people aren't sort of pinned out. And so I'm really, really glad to see that there's a wide array of support for this identification, to be able to ensure that people are not singled out as undocumented simply because they have this card. I definitely urge us to look into the ability to protect this information for everyone, and I welcome the opportunity to have a lively debate about the possibilities and the ability to create a safe space for all. Thank you.
Tomas Robles?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, uh, council members for allowing me the space to speak. Uh, my name is Tomas Robles, Director of Living United for Change in Arizona, a nonprofit that works for worker rights, veteran rights, and immigrants. As a veteran of United States Marine Corps, someone who served this country proudly, um, parents of legal immigrants, and also a taxpayer, regardless of what we say, every single person here buys food in Phoenix, pays rent in Phoenix, uses services in Phoenix, everyone here is a taxpayer. I'd love to have a discussion where we don't succumb to fear mongering and claiming that there's a crazy outside or crazy, or claiming that everyone here is a felon. Um, I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran, I'm an outsider person. So what I would like to really speak about is the benefits of the ID. A Harvard study was done on the IDs done in New Haven, Connecticut, Oakland, California, and San Francisco. These IDs not only increased unity amongst residents, they felt like belonged to the city for the first time. It also increased trust amongst the police force and the communities that they serve. And the reason why is many of our, uh, brave men and women in uniform sometimes deal with situations where they don't know the individuals who they are speaking with or confronting or working with in the community. This ID would at least let our police officers know that the person you're speaking with is one of us, is a resident in the city of Phoenix. In addition, the attention that would be brought on our local businesses that really are the, the engine that make our economy work, they pay our workers more than most corporations do. And I think this ID would be very helpful in ensuring that our local businesses get added business from our, from our Phoenix residents. This ID is about unity, this ID is about ensuring that everyone here has a voice. And me, myself, as a person who put his hand up, raised his right hand in the air, and said, we would defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign or domestic, this is the perfect ID for people. Again, we also have homeless vets, homeless vets that have no ID and cannot get a state ID because they don't have an address or identification. These IDs would help homeless vets that don't have any kind of other form of identification for them to allow them to use the benefits that they have rightfully earned. My name is Tomas Robles, I support this ID, and I hope you all understand that this is more of a benefit than a cost to the city. Thank you.
I have 20, uh, not to speak cards. So, uh, we will put those on record, and, uh, I'm just not going to go through all of them. We can just put them on record. Thank you. Uh, thank you for all your comments and, uh, um, expressions. I've, I'm sorry?
Not to speak, were they all in support?
There's 20 of them, and, um, I think we're going to go into discuss, uh, regarding this. And I'll count as, as we discuss the ID. Any comments from my colleagues regarding the, uh, one ID?
I have questions?
Okay, go ahead.
What do you have to do to get a library card? City of Phoenix Library Card, somebody's got to know. There you go.
Uh, you need to prove who you are who you say you are, and you have to have proof of living in the city of Phoenix.
How do you do that?
Uh, various ways, multiple IDs, we accept a lot of different ID cards. And also, um, it can be a utility bill, of a phone bill, something that shows your address.
So what do you need this other card for?
It would just be another ID that we would be able to use.
But you're saying everybody who gets a library card now already has multiple other forms of identification?
Generally, yes. Sometimes teenagers don't necessarily have an ID card.
I understand, let's set kids aside for a second, but, I mean, even they could get a social security card.
And...
Even they could get a passport.
Right. But we do facilitate that at times.
They can certainly get. So, I guess I don't know why this card, as described, would make people feel better about something they presumably already have, assuming we're going to have the same standard for this card that we would have to get a library card. And I don't know why we wouldn't, because you want to get the books back.
That's correct.
So this card...
Would be another ID that we would use to issue a library card.
Why, why would we need it?
What's the difference between this card and the library card?
I mean, a library card, I'm, here's my library card. It doesn't have my name on it, it doesn't have my address on it or anything else. I have an LA Fitness card somewhere in my wallet. Um, you know, so for the gym, like our, some citizens use our, our centers. So, it doesn't have my name or address or anything else on it. If I gave it to the police as some form of identification, they would of course laugh at me. So why would we make this, which apparently would have the same standards, we would, we would apparently be throwing pictures and addresses and so forth on there? Why would we do that? Well, I guess I'm, maybe I'm not asking you that question. Yes, whoever, sorry, it's not your, your deal.
Chairwoman Pastor and Councilman Waring all attempted to answer that question because we are still in the initial phases. We haven't, uh, written any policies or procedures yet for the card. However, the concept with a unified city services card is just like the picture is showing on the screen, that, that residents would have just one card to be able to do multiple different things, whether it's checking out a book, going to an exercise class at one of our parks facilities, going to the landfill to drop things off.
Will it have your name and address and so forth on it?
We haven't identified that yet.
Or picture?
We, we have not identified any of the...
Well, then, I don't understand all the testimony that had, that made it sound like this was some sort of card that would get you into schools or would be satisfactory for the police or anything else.
Those, the examples that, uh, we, or I and many others have looked at, uh, demonstrate multiple uses. So you could have your biometrics on a card, uh, to identify you. Uh, this, the purpose of this card, or talking about the purpose of this card, is to unify all our services, so someone could pay their water bill, someone could go to the library, someone could go to the parks, uh, they can go to the landfill, uh, they would be able to use it. We are, uh, exploring in the sense of other partnerships, uh, with the arts community, uh, and in using it, being used for, uh, the children's museums, the Phoenix Arts Community. There are many different reasons, uh, we're looking at this as one, a card to be used as a, uh, one ID within the city.
Can I address the payment issue?
Yes.
So this would be a card that could be used for payment, I guess, for people who don't have credit cards, debit cards, checks, or cash? Uh, it seems like there are multiple ways you can pay for stuff right now. Uh, I had a student ID card when I was in college, that technology is at least 30 years old. You put your meal, money on it and so forth, and you swiped it. I think you also used it as a library card. This is not a new concept. We are not exactly cutting-edge, uh, technology-wise here at the city of Phoenix, as previous discussions and other subcommittees have illustrated. I guess I, I am all for the idea of, instead of having a library card and a, you know, a community center pass and needing your water bill, which is probably the silliest to go to the town dump and dump, drop stuff off, because that's one that I get complaints about, even from former council members, um, who forget their water bill when they go.
And you need your water bill?
I guess, I guess I would say that might make sense. The idea that this is going to be some card that would have your picture and ID on it and everything, uh, I, I would think something that's like a strip on the back that just says, you know, hey, this is your library card, and you run it through the machine, although now we use, I guess it's a card reader.
Yeah.
Well, I, I still had some questions. You go to the, um, uh, town dump, well, I, I was rolling.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. You go in, you scan it, that might make sense. Uh, you go to the senior center, that might make sense. It says you're paid up, oh, you're not paid up, you got to stop, just like when you go to LA Fitness. For any other purpose, when you can get a state ID, even if you're not a driver, when you get your social security card, when you get a passport, and all the benefits that implied, if those things aren't going to differentiate between citizens and non-citizens, then why do we even bother? Why not have it just be a free-for-all? We'll just put a name on a piece of paper and you can claim to be anybody you want to be.
Well, here's...
I, I guess I, I'd like a answer of what, what we're trying to accomplish here.
If...
Go ahead.
If I might, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, what staff is asking today as part of the recommendation is seeking your direction to move forward, to have those discussions about what you're talking about today. What would the card be used for, what would be on the card? What would be the technology requirements in order to do something like this? So, the, the recommendation is actually for them to seek your direction to move forward, to work on some of those questions that you're raising today.
And because these cards, if I still have the four man chair, are not cheap. I think we just got an order, is Rita still here? Oh yeah, on the, on the library cards, didn't we just place an order for some? They're, they're fairly expensive to produce, I'm sure they're also fairly expensive. I don't remember the number, but, how much?
14 cents each.
14 cents each, but you know, for thousands of them, obviously it adds up in a city that's strapped budget-wise, as we discussed yesterday. Uh, I'm sure it's equally expensive or more so to do it for community centers, uh, et cetera, for the different, does anybody know, I guess I'm not directing it, Rita, anybody know how many different types of cards we issue? Is that it, those, those three? Those three plus then the...
There's more, plus more, but we have many different cards that we issue.
How many different cards do we issue?
In, in our initial research, Councilman, these are the cards and the, in addition to your city services bill, that we were able to identify.
So it's, it's the three, it's the three cards I'm looking at. Consolidating those cards arguably makes sense. For having it be a use of anything other than going to the dump, going to the library, going to our parks, I just, I'm not sure why you would be using this. Um, Commander, what's the, so you pull somebody over, you ask for ID, or you stop somebody and ask for ID, how, how does that usually go? I mean, what, what IDs are usually produced? Do people not have ID? Could you walk us through that?
Yes, uh, Chairwoman and, uh, subcommittee members. Uh, this would be no different than somebody having their school ID card. It, um, unless we had something to certify their, uh, you know, uh, immigration status, just like we would on, um, you know, on a driver's license, et cetera, that's what would fall under meeting some of the requirements if it comes for, um, presumptive ID when it comes to immigration-type status. So, I guess this would be just like having a library card or anything else. If we made that stop and they handed it to us, it would be some sort of form of identification, but not necessarily identification that met the requirements for certain things. And that's would be, you know, it would be identification depending on what's on this particular card, on whether it met some of the criteria for, um, showing ID in a, as a passenger of a vehicle, but you would have to have all the biometrics on there and some of the, um, the requirements that's in the statute itself. And again, without knowing what direction we're going to go on this, we don't know whether that'll meet that or not. But again, it would not be a driver's license, it would not show, um, uh, whether anybody was here or their immigration status either.
So if you're following up, you'd want more than just this. Because the library card right now, my gym card, as I've said, they, they don't have my picture, they don't have my name, they don't have anything on there. I don't know why, if the standard to get one of these library cards is now going to be the same, it's going to be the same for this card, why a police officer would take that seriously as this is the person they're purporting to be?
It would be...
And if they're not going to take it seriously, I would imagine to put a picture, biometric information, address, everything on here, I would think it would be a much more expensive card.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the cost, but I can tell you that, um, yes.
And the whole point of this conversation and the whole point of, uh, going to recommendation is to explore all of this.
I'm being far sighted by bringing up some of these questions right now. Aren't you proud of me?
I am very proud of you.
I'm the little acorn that becomes the oak.
I still have a, I have a speaker card, BD Hernandez, I got this...
Can I, can I ask another follow-up first? Just to take a second. So you could go get, right now, if you wanted to, even if you're not a driver, you could go get a state ID card that would have the information you're talking about. And you guys would take it, you being police officers, would take it as a legitimate form of identification.
I don't, I don't think...
And every confidence that that is the person...
I don't know if you could answer that.
Well, I, I mean, there are state ID cards now, right? That are not driver's licenses.
Correct.
Chair, Chairwoman, uh, Councilmember Waring, there are state ID cards now, um, but whether that's presumptive ID related to drivers', immigration status, that, you know, again, you have the state law for different requirements, as the chief has, has mentioned. There are different requirements for, for different forms of identification. So, to answer your question, I'd have to have, I'd have to have some sort of, in particular circumstances. The, the, the police officer would probably look at it, but, but for the particular citation, it, it would be difficult to know whether that's acceptable under the law or not.
I guess, as a, as a police officer that's been in the field, you must have been handed various forms of identification. You get, you get IDs from other states, right? You get pulled over, people from Washington State, they got a Washington driver's license. You can check that out, run it through the computer, whatever you need to do. Um, I guess, what forms, I mean, how many state, different state IDs are there? I would imagine just one, driver's license or a non-driver's license, plus social security and so forth. Are there others in your experience?
Uh, mainly driver's license. Oh, from Arizona, uh, just the state ID as far as I know, the Arizona driver's license.
Okay, so, so it shouldn't take too long to check out this one other form of identification. I mean, in your experience, what do you tell your officers? If someone hands us something that's not a driver's license, but it says state of Arizona on it, I mean, what do you got, do you, do you say, oh, okay, that works? I mean, there must be a policy, and I, I would imagine you'd know it, so what's...
Yes, uh, when we're handed identification, we're trying to identify a, a subject, and we have the constitutional right to detain them and identify them. Um, and it's, we verify it via computer, so there has to be a storage, uh, retention of whatever the ID, state ID or driver's license, um, so we can refer to it. And if it's, we aren't able to find it, we normally will transport them and fingerprint to verify their, who they are.
Um, I, police have, having served in the legislature, police have, have complained, either through back channels, I can't remember if they actually testified to this effect, about the different driver's license plates. You know, there's Rotary Club plates, there, there's, I don't even know how many plates.
Domestic violence.
There's probably, it might be 100 plates now, I don't know, they probably, I know Virginia, I saw a wall once with all their different plates, and officers said, you know, it's hard, it makes it harder to identify and so forth. I would imagine throwing extraneous identifications that don't really mean anything out there would do the same. I, I would just think that would complicate an already complicated job. Things are moving fast and so forth, you're grabbing this ID, you're trying to move on to the next thing and establish who this person is. Um, I, I don't know, it just seems like it would make it harder to do the job.
I don't even think we're there yet of...
Well, it sounded like that's where people wanted to go, so I'm trying to address some of these concerns.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think any of this would be mandatory, but, um, I, I want to dig in as well. I know we have one more card.
Well, I just, I wanted to see if she had concerns about that, since that's been expressed in another area that I would consider analogous.
Uh, thank you. Um, it, again, we probably, we would be addressing it no differently than if we had the ASU card or the school ID card. Um, when we have a, a lot of identification cards that are out there from individual organizations, unless we can confirm it through a records check, computer check, it's always difficult for us to do. So depending, you know, everything's case by case. I mean, we take that and, well, you might give me an ASU, like, uh, ID card, but I run it and find your driver's license information, and I can confirm you that way, that's one thing. But if I'm not able to confirm, you know, who you are, and I do need to confirm who you are because of whatever I'm investigating, then we'll take the proper, uh, procedure to double-check your identification. So if that's going to checking fingerprints or whatever case may be, depending on the situation. This would be no different in this particular case if there's not a, um, if, if it's just strictly biometrics and there's nothing that's, shows what they have to show in order to put that information on there, so.
So I guess, uh, there are a lot of comments about this making it easier to enact with officers or making people feel better about their status and so forth. Sounds like that might be classified as sort of false hope because it's not going to do, it's not going to change anything that's a status quo now, it sounds like.
And so, uh, one of the reasons why I, uh, am looking and, and, and asking to look into this is a number of reasons. I work with many students that, uh, for whatever reason have been separated, uh, from their families, are in foster care systems, are difficulty getting any type of their legal paperwork, and, uh, sometimes don't have a form of ID. I also work with domestic violence, uh, children, or children that are abused, that have left their house and have now no longer any contact with their family or choose not to have contact, and we have to, I sometimes is the mediator of trying to help them, uh, move forward within their life. And there are a number of reasons why, uh, people don't have IDs. Uh, I can give you a great example of my grandfather, who is an American citizen, who was part of this country, and for whatever reason, never drove, never drove, my grandmother always drove. And for whatever reason, we did not have his birth certificate, and we could not identify him. And it took us about four years to go through the process to get his birth certificate in order to get him an ID. And this is now at 80. So, uh, there are many reasons why, uh, for whatever reason, situation, circumstances, that, uh, people don't have access to their paperwork and don't have an ID. So, coming back to this, I was looking into in the technology efficiency world and, uh, wanting to be efficient and effective, and look at our new technology and how, what ways that all our systems could talk to one another and be able to look at an ID and have an ID where, uh, someone could come in and use it as a library card, use it at, for the parks, use it for, to, uh, the landfill, use it for... it for, to the landfill, use it for water, also use it possibly looking into using it as a transit, light rail card to be able to put money on there, possibly, you know, looking at all these different cities, maybe be a bank card, a debit card. And so there are many possibilities that we could look at or explore, and that's why I brought it to the committee. We are at the beginning stages as to just exploring and looking at it to seeing if this is something that we want to move forward with and move to, and do. So that was my intent and purpose.
You're like the Magellan of this committee. So thanks.
Go ahead.
No, I want to go to our last-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Viridian Hernandez, and I'm part of the One Phoenix ID Coalition, and I just wanted to come up and address some of the concerns I think that were brought up. The idea behind the One Phoenix ID Coalition and behind the One Phoenix ID was really, one, the one focus was streamlining services into one card. Like, as you mentioned, right, we spent a lot of money on a lot of different cards. So being able to consolidate in one and reduce the cost that the city is, the cost that the city has, again, by partnering up with a third party, by partnering up with the financial institution, that is cost that the financial institution would run with. So that was one of the first ideas. And a big reason for that was for, right, you, I think you asked several different cards, and we can use several different cards to do all these services, and that makes sense, as you stated, and it makes sense to streamline cards into one card, and why the ID part, right? And that was the identification part. Again, for a lot of students, 14, this ID, similar to New York, similar to other cities, would be being administered from 14 years and up, when in the state we can't get the ID until 16. So that's why a lot of school boards, a lot of school board districts, high school districts, and elementary school districts have signed on, because we recognize that students don't have a valid ID. As Officer Renteria, Commander Renteria mentioned, there are certain statutes that make an ID valid, right? Having biometrics are some of the things that are required to be a valid ID, and so that helps students have a valid ID at the age of 14. A lot of, also for our homeless community, there are a lot of more barriers to obtain a state ID. For our homeless community, for survivors of domestic violence, such as myself and family, there's a lot more barriers for us to be able to obtain that type of ID. Another thing with state IDs, the state IDs, when they're not driver's license, they're only six months, and so every six months you have to go through the hassle to obtain a new ID and do all that, right, which is an inconvenience for people who already do not have access to get it in the first place. And a lot of the shelters that we've spoken to with the homeless community and shelters, one of the biggest things that attracted them about this idea was the light rail and bus services. So shelters provide a monthly card for their members, for homeless veterans, for homeless community, to use the bus. And so for them, the exciting part was being able to automatically load a card directly for that member. Because right now, what they do is they provide a paper card on a monthly basis, and it goes through several different people before it goes to the person in need. And so that has been a really exciting thing. And for us, as a coalition, having over 50 organizations be part of this, from all walks of life and all different, representing different communities, it's about connecting our community. It's about connecting West Phoenix to East Phoenix to Central Phoenix and South Phoenix, North Phoenix, and being able to identify as Phoenicians, identify as one community. Another big, one of the organizations that used to graduate program has been, again, identifying as Phoenicians. We have a lot of graduate students that come from out of state, and it is really hard for them to connect to the city or to connect and feel part of it, therefore, to be active in the community, therefore to shop locally in the community, therefore to participate in the community. And so that has been also a big, a big push behind this, is being able to just have a lot of our out-of-state students, a lot of our communities that have difficulties obtaining an ID, being able to connect as a city, as a community. I think those were some of the questions that I had, but I'm open to answer any more questions.
And I'd like to respond.
Can I, you can respond, and then I'm moving to the next piece.
Excellent. So, so I guess to our, she's still here, library staff, Rita, do we have people younger than 18 or 14 or whatever the age getting a library card?
Yes.
Wow. So, so students can get library cards now? That's not an issue? Because it sounded like that was an issue, and I'm not sure how that could be an issue.
Well, it's an issue.
We have students who use our community centers, right? Play sports, go in, get passes. I guess that's not Director Farida, right? So again, I'm not, I'm not sure how this would help people who are already able to do what they're doing already.
And I think that is, that's like an added for people who do not have, so we do have a lot of community that does, right? But the biggest thing is the stream, like, having everything in one card, one, for efficiency for students, for parents, for families, for schools. And the identity, the identification part is a plus, and it is not needed for a lot of things. But right, for, to obtain a library card, you do have to come with some, something to show that you are who you are. And so I wasn't able to obtain a card until about six months ago, into a library card, because I didn't have another form of identification. So there are cases such as myself, but there are also a lot of students who are able to, with their parents and with their families and with other forms of identification.
So before I had a driver's license, I remember my, I think it was my mom, taking me in to get a social security card.
So-
People do that, right? You can get a social security card at what age? I assume immediately.
When you're born.
When you're born.
The questions I think should be directed to Tony.
You can get a social security card when you're born?
Yes.
I could go get one for my kids right now.
Yes, thank you, Council, Chairwoman Pastor and Councilman Waring.
Again, it doesn't, seems like we're solving a problem that doesn't really exist.
Well, it exists.
Go ahead.
It exists.
If I can, if I can clarify again, Chairwoman Pastor and Councilman Waring, the idea with the Unified City Services Card is to consolidate all of the various city cards into one, to make it more efficient for city services for residents to enjoy.
I will say this too. Are we not the identity theft capital of North America?
All right, I'm gonna, okay.
Well, I get to a legitimate question. We're making it easy to get IDs to thrown out there.
It is, but I think I'm gonna move, I'm moving to-
That's not a good public policy. We'll put it that way.
I'm moving to Councilman Nowakowski's letter. Statement in support of Phoenix One ID. Over the past few years, the city of Phoenix has come up with innovative ways to save our taxpayers millions of dollars. The Phoenix One ID will be, will be an excellent addition to our cost savings goal. The Phoenix One ID will allow recipients to use many of our city's services, such as the library, parks, and recreation department, arts and culture, community and senior centers, without having to use multiple ID cards. As a chairman of the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee, the safety of our residents is very important to me. The ID will be an important tool for domestic violent victims and witnesses of crime to use as a form of identification when reporting a crime. The homeless populations and seniors will also benefit by having, by having an identification card when receiving social services. Many cities across the country are integrating a municipal ID program for its efficiency and the advantages their residents obtain by using the ID. I support the Phoenix One ID for the efficiency, cost savings, and safety, safety it will provide for our residents. I look forward to learning more about the implementation and enrollment process for this valuable tool. Michael Nowakowski, Councilmember of District Four, as he was not able to be here. I mean, Seven. Sorry. And I also have a letter from, I'm going to put it in the record, from Vermin Pierre, Board President of Roosevelt Row Community Development Corporation. Any other comments?
I have some comments. I have some comments. So, so, you know, I heard a lot of people speaking in support. I heard a lot of people speaking to oppose, and the common thread of those that spoke to oppose is, you know, there's an issue, there's a concern with bypassing federal law, which, I'm not sure how you do that, okay? But, well, I mean, you know, so frankly, the state did try to do that with 1070, and a lot of that was struck down, right? So I'm not sure, I'm not sure how you do that. No one who presented for this ID, no one who spoke in support of the ID talked about this ID taking place of an actual Arizona state-issued ID or some, a passport, something that would then sort of, you know, bypass federal law. So I'm not sure where that concern is coming from, and I'm not sure why it continues to be restated. The concern about the, the identity theft, we're not talking about social security numbers either. We're talking about good business. I guess the way, what I'm saying is, this shouldn't be opposed because of the federal law concerns, because there are no, this is, that's not what we're dealing with here. That's not what we're talking about. It's also, we're not talking about, you know, information like social security numbers, so I don't know where that concern is coming from. And it certainly shouldn't be opposed because it makes people feel good, for crying out loud. You know, so someone's going to have a, take pride in having something in their, in their possession with their name on it that makes them feel like they belong to the community in which they decided to plant their roots? And, and-
103, all for information.
And, and so, and so because that makes someone feel good, I guess I'm going to come out and oppose it. I don't, I don't see the point in that either. What I do see is good business. We had a young lady up here, that was just up here, Vidi. So Vidi is up here giving us a lesson on good business, on consolidating. It is 2015, by the way, you know? So when are we going to get to, when are we going to get to a point of having a card, and like many in the private sectors figured out, a card that consolidates all of those things? That sounds like a good idea to me. Something where that, that I can use if I have to go to, you know, use any type of a city service, from paying a bill to, you know, a library card, you know? But I got to tell you, we're missing an opportunity if we don't, if we just don't look into this anyway. So I, not yet, Laura, Madam Chair. I was, I'm sitting here, but I'm sitting, you gave Waring like 45 minutes, you're going to come back with two.
Yeah, and I'm not even done.
So, so-
Give him an hour, I'll take two.
All right, so, you know, I'm sitting here and I'm listening to this stuff, and I decided to Google, I'd never even heard of Pogo. Has anyone heard of that? I just, you know, Googled a tourist pass in Arizona, and Pogo came up, okay? And it lists here a couple of things. This is the, this is why we do want to consolidate things, because they figured it out, the tourist industry has figured it out. You know, there's a few attractions here. D-backs, I'm a fan, I'll go to the games. But if I purchase this pass, then I also get free admission into other things, things that I never, ever, ever thought that I would try, that I would try, because it's now part of this, this deal, you know? Jump Street, for an example. I may not try that. I've been to, but, but the point is, you're opening this opportunity to really allow people to, you know, try these other attractions. And, and again, you know, we start here with the city services, but we should be looking into public-private partnerships. You know, that if you do have a card like this, then you do have a discount or free admission, depending on how this works. All of these questions still have to be answered, but ask Alak what they may think, if it, if it drives more business that way, or any of our cultural centers. Talk to the Phoenix Zoo. What would they think? Wouldn't they love to have more business going that way? We all depend on it. There's just these opportunities for public-private partnerships that we're just going to, you know, that potentially we could just forego, because there's this concern at the federal level that, that this card doesn't touch to begin with. So, you know, and just because we can get by without it doesn't mean that we should. I mean, if that were the case, then we wouldn't have cars, we'd be on horses right now, you know? I mean, I can go on and on. I mean, if there's an opportunity to get efficient and to, and to get better and to, you know, and to move in a, in a direction of being the city of the future, then we have to look at these things. So that said, and if you're ready for a motion, I can give the motion, but the recommendation is laid out perfectly here. Do you want to, you want to hand it over before I make this motion?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
I would like to ask a question.
Quick.
Will this be given also to illegal aliens?
Could you please answer?
Yes, so, so we talked about efficiency and so forth, but I couldn't help but noticing in New York, Mayor de Blasio budgeted 8.4 million for the program, and the program is expected to cost 5.6 million annually. At a time when we don't have 5.6 million, and they're a bigger city, so let's cut it in half. We don't have $3 million laying around to pay for this. So if it makes people feel good, that's fantastic. It's not going to make people feel $3 million worth of feel-good. I've heard the same feel-good argument about we have four major sports teams, that's supposed to make me feel better about my city. It's really preposterous, if you say it out loud. So it's, it'd be nice, I guess, to have a card that gets people to go to other stuff. But, you know, I did something absolutely outrageous last week, totally outside the norm. You know how limited I am in my, my scope? I went to Scottsdale, and I got a library card from Scottsdale, because they had an audiobook that we don't have in Phoenix. Our Phoenix library is very nice at identifying where I could get the book, but we don't do interlibrary loan for audio materials, for some reasons, about Winston Churchill, and I wanted to finish, a three-volume thing. So I went to Scottsdale, and I got a Scottsdale library card. Am I limited? No. I had to show my state driver's license, or I could have used, I'm sure, a passport, state ID, social security card, and they would have given me a library card. I don't even live in their city. So the idea that we're somehow prohibited from doing anything, as long as you had appropriate ID, I think is a spurious argument, to say the least. You know, so if we're going to spend a lot of money to be fashionable, to keep up with these other cities, I don't know what the goal is, this would have to be a money-saving item. ............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ ...[1685.01]
I mean, any one of these businesses, why wouldn't they want this card to exist? In fact, we heard from the business community today. We've heard from educator, educators today, the business community today, nonprofits today, we've heard from our clergy, our faith-based community today. Why wouldn't we look at this?
I'm a pastor, too.
So.
Well, we.
So.
We, we've heard from, we've, we've heard from people who advocate for all of God's children today, which is incredibly important to me also.
So.
Okay.
And we need a motion, I need a motion.
Sure.
To ask staff to look into a One ID, the cost, the, look into public-private partnerships, all different platforms and look at it. So, we need.
So, let me know if this covers it, Madam Chair, but, right, I think it's, it's laid out pretty clearly to me, but I would make a motion for city staff to identify technology requirements, such as the various software platforms used throughout the city, and security, and compatibility requirements, and develop proposed implementation policies and standards, such as who will be eligible for the card, what the card can be used for, how the information will be stored, shared, and protected, and other factors, and including any potential public-private partnerships.
Can I ring in the motion?
That's the, so that would be my motion. Would that cover? Does that pretty much cover it? It sounds like an umbrella, and I think it's supposed, it should be at this point.
So, to clarify, it's to identify technology requirements, to develop proposed implementation policies and standards regarding the federal and state law impacts on the use of ID, information storage, sharing, and protection, card usage, and card eligibility criteria. Does that cover?
And the cost.
Of course, the cost is.
And the cost, that's included.
Clearly, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, Chairwoman and Councilman Valenzuela, that, that sums it up. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 No.
Those not in favor, say no.
No.
Two to one.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Thank you. So, we have one more item that I am going to push through, because I think it's really good, and it's going to happen soon, and people need to be aware of it. Katim Valencia and those who are speaking on Americans, Americans Promise Alliance Grad Nation Summit, I probably should have done that before this item right now.
... four more. That are part of your fun.
Thank you very much, we do very much for the illegals. I know your grandmother did not have a.
Have a, have a great day. Have a nice day.
I hope you will, too.
God bless you.
I didn't even hear what you said.
Chairwoman, members of the Subcommittee, I'm here to present on an exciting event that will be happening April 10th. The city of Phoenix, along with Phoenix College and Phoenix Union High School District, received funding to implement a summit, a Reclaiming Youth Summit. The funding comes from America's Promise. The America's Promise launched Grad Nation Summit Series in 2013 with the goal to have 100 summits across the nation, and their goal is to increase high school graduation rates to 90% across the country. Currently, Arizona in 2013 has a 79% high school completion rate, and in Phoenix, we are at 78%. The Reclaiming Youth Talent Summit is going to be held on April 10th, 2015, at the Herd Museum at 2301 North Central. We have a lot of partners that are partnering with this event, they're all listed on the screen, from the National League of Cities, to Degree Phoenix, Phoenix Union High School District, AT&amp;T, the City of Phoenix, and Maricopa Community Colleges. The Reclaiming Youth Talent, we have several goals. We really want to start a discussion with our business leaders on how we can highlight and really promote programs that help students graduate from high school on time. Currently, in Arizona, high school dropouts cost us about $7.4 billion over the life of the, of the dropout, and in Phoenix alone, it's $1.7 billion in economic loss. We want to make sure our students within the city of Phoenix and even Arizona have the right tools to graduate from high school, and then be prepared and complete community college. In 2008 cohort of graduating high school Arizona, only 25% attained a college certificate or degree. Again, another goal is also the importance of discovering their careers through mentorships and internships and leader, leadership development with our local businesses. Really, how do we engage our local businesses to empower youth and promote youth leadership within their companies? We have several speakers across the nation coming to city, to the city of Phoenix. We have the undersecretary, Deputy Undersecretary Jeff Apple from the U.S. Department of Education. We have Eileen Klein, who's a president of the Arizona Board of Regents, and we have our guest speaker, our keynote, Blair Taylor, the Chief Community Officer with Starbucks, and how to, how Starbucks has engaged the community around empowering youth and providing resources within their community to support youth and disconnected youth. We also have another business member, Jerry M. Fuentes, the president of the AT&amp;T Arizona and New Mexico Region, and Kim Covington, the president and CEO of the Covington Company, and former 12 News anchor, will also be emceeing the event. We're very excited about this, Finn, it's our first time that we're going to bring businesses and community members together to start talking and have a call to action on how we can increase our high school and college completion rates.
So, this is April 10th?
This is April 10th.
At the Herd Museum?
Correct.
And who is being invited?
Local businesses, over 400 local businesses invites have gone out. We're hoping to attain at least 200 individuals at this event. We are asking the local council, Phoenix councils, while the mayor, to send invites and promote this leadership, the Youth Summit.
All right, well, thank you. Any questions for Tim?
Just a com, just a comment, Tim. Again, you know, we just talked with Rita Hamilton and the library, all the things that she's doing, just innovative things, and, and you were, the things that, I can say the same things about you, looking for grants, just connecting other city programs into the programs that we, that you have, that we have, that you run. I just, I really appreciate your effort and just your creativity and, and, you know, your willingness to succeed in this area, because we desperately, as a community, we need it. I truly believe that it comes down to two things. When, when you think, I, you know, I'm big on economic development and jobs and the entrepreneurial space, and, you know, when you meet with business leaders, it comes down to two things always, education and infrastructure. And, and the things that you're doing are, you know, are definitely appreciated. Thank you.
I appreciate that, and again, this is no cost to the city, so funding is being provided through America's Promise.
That's up to the point there.
That's the plus, no cost to the city. Thank you. I have one comment card, and it's Richard Zuckerman.
Yes, as to education, George Herbert Walker Bush started this whole idea about federalizing education of the states. That's a responsibility of the states, not the federal government. George Herbert Walker Bush is a bad example to start this whole thing about federalizing the education curriculum. If, take a look at JohnTaylorGatto.com, I have a number of his books. One is called The Underground History of American Education. One famous educator in 1930 said, "Public schools are scientifically designed not to over-educate. It's intended to dumb people down." Whether they graduate high school, the curriculum is so flawed, so inadequate, I don't believe they're ready for adulthood, because the, that we're going along with the feds and the U.S. Department of Education. That's as to that issue.
Okay, thank you. Any future agenda items? No? Okay, the call to the public, adjourn.